Rich is sitting.
Rich is.
That's my best side.
I can not with you, Joe.
You can, I mean, you can move it like I didn't, I was trying to.
Sounds great.
But you can move it over there.
I'm thinking of moving right up to the.
Go ahead, you can go.
Richard's Bob, he's. Seriously, he's not here. Oh, yeah, I mean. He's not here.
Not worth it.
Yes.
I said that, did I say that on the mic?
That'll pay.
That's just smells. It just smells.
Yep. Got it.
Again, I hope I didn't knock you over.
Yeah. But I'm in there. I think I have to. Say something about that.
All right, I'll call the committee of the whole to order. A roll call has been taken. A motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Steve, any comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Approval of the previous committee of the whole minutes.
Move.
But all on.
Second.
Second by Dan.
Um, I have to, my name isn't on the roll call, but I, I was here. And then there's just a typo, I don't know if you want to fix that, it's a. Compensation under new business A.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Citizen comment, is there anybody up there, Becca? Yeah. Um, finance and purchasing. Review the financials and treasuries report. Um, they're providing your packets and. Oh. There you charges.
I move the, I have a motion to move those to council.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, motion carried. Did you move to move the. Minute, the monthly invoices?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. You're ahead of me.
No, I, well, I thought, yeah, I thought we were on that, sorry.
Okay, police department. Review monthly reports.
So we had a total of three hundred and fifty eight little incidents over the last. Uh, month and a half now. Um, since we skipped that first meeting. One of the meetings, that's why it's a higher number. Um, my twenty twenty five annual report is done, I actually left in my office, I'll be bringing that up at break. Um, so I'll provide each of you a copy of that, so you have it, this will also be available on the website. And we will provide a link on our Facebook page for citizens to read. Uh, it is quite informative. Um, I also wanted to bring the council up to speed on a upcoming purchase that we're going to need to do in twenty twenty six, possibly twenty twenty seven. Um, our tasers are currently. Uh, ten years old. And they are, they've expanded its life cycle, so we're going to need to replace them. Um, unfortunately, the quotes that we've gotten, uh, TASER has changed how they do things, used to be able to buy them one or two at a time. Now you have to do package deals. Um, and we're looking at, at this point. Um, be a five year package deal, a five year program. Uh, and the total cost for seven tasers with some other. Um, essentials that we're probably going to cut out is about forty five thousand dollars, so. Tasers are very, very expensive right now. Um, I don't see that cost going down because they do have the corner in the market, they are pretty much all that is out there for law enforcement. Again, our old ones are ten years old, so, uh, batteries, we just replaced them with our current. Um, X twos, they are no longer making the batteries or the cartridges, so we're pretty much. Really don't have much of a choice, so that is going to be an upcoming capital. In twenty six, I will try to stretch it to twenty seven, but it really depends on if we have any issues with, with the current ones that we have. Um, next, I would like to introduce the city council, uh, Grace. Overborne, she's going to be our newest officer. Um, currently, uh, she is in the two year associate degree law enforcement academy program at NTWC, NWTC at Green Bay. Uh, graduation date, end of May, twenty twenty five. Uh, so currently she has been hired part time as a civilian with our department to learn the ins and outs of the police department. Um, and once she graduates, she'll be, uh, transferred right into the full time position, so. Uh, we're very excited for her to join our team. And we think she will be an excellent, uh, uh. Addition to our department, so, uh, if you do see her, she's going to be, uh, with an officer over the next. Um, four to six weeks till she graduates, so she's working, uh, twenty four hours a week. Um, going through tasks, going through geography, uh, learning just how we do things. Um, to get a step up, but when she starts, she'll be able to dive right in. Uh, another exciting thing that we do is, uh, we're bringing to airport days this year. Um, we are, uh, we have confirmed that we are getting a Blackhawk. Um, so that is a definitive yes. Um, from the military, so that is something we've never had, from my understanding, at airport days. We will not have the climbing wall, uh, they discontinued that unfortunately, but the Blackhawk is definitely coming. So hopefully that will bring attendance up a little bit this year with that new attraction. Um, some notable incidents that we had. Over the past month, uh, some of you may have already know, or have known that we had an active threat at our school. Um, last month, uh, and we took that very seriously. Uh, we had additional staff come in on overtime, uh, in order to make sure that, uh, uh, we had, uh, uh, safety. For the school for that, uh, for those couple of days, we did identify a juvenile and charges were sent up for that, so we did make an arrest on that. Our department also has been busy with, uh. A handful of juveniles on Taft Avenue, uh, we've had thirteen calls in the last, uh, month at that residence. Uh, and they are being evicted from the property, so that should bring our call volume down a little bit. Uh, on April seventeenth. But some of the calls we've had is disorderly conduct, harassment, welfare checks, loud music, and a variety of other types of calls, so. Uh, we are happy that, that that's going to be hopefully taken care of in a few days. We did have some damage at the community center. Uh, at some of our parks and the new cameras that have been installed there really helped us. Identify three juveniles that did damage a door at the men's, the men's room at the community center. Uh, and we were able to make some, uh, uh, issue some citations and get some restitution hopefully for that as well. On March thirteenth, we assisted the Department of Revenue in serving a warrant at Tabasco's Restaurant on Wisconsin Avenue. Upon assisting the Department of Revenue, Captain Trader located numerous items of drug paraphernalia and also a firearm. Uh, all items are seized and charges are sent to the DA's office, which is probably why a lot of you are wondering why it's not open right now. Um, the Department of Revenue, uh, uh, up and down at this point, so. Lastly, on March twenty sixth, Officer Doty assisted the Sheriff's Department with a fire on Honeymoon Hill Road. As well as helping and providing lifesaver met, life saving measures. On a child, uh, who unfortunately did lose his life, uh, at that fire. We assisted the fire department, uh, the sheriff's department, um, and the EMS on that. If you have any other questions, I would definitely. Be willing to answer that.
They're going to be helicopter rides.
I'm not in charge of airport days.
All right, thank you for that report. Uh, fire department.
Now, we had seven calls for the month of March, uh, we had a fire alarm. Where the employees cleaning the grill didn't, uh, have the hood turned on, so we realized their system works really well, but. We stopped to visit them, uh, we had three mutual aid calls, uh, we had one for a structure fire, uh, fatal car accident and a brush fire. We had a tree branch that fell on the power lines causing a small grass fire. Uh, woodshed fire next to an outdoor wood burner. Um, fatal house fire involving a one year old child. Um. My comment I want to make on that is, I just want to thank people that reached out, there are members of our fire department. Um, just support overall from the community has been really appreciated. Was a trying day for everyone involved. Um. Charlie Blado has completed his firefighter one certification. Scott Bonlander, Travis Price, and Brad Wolfleff completed their fire officer class at LTC. Then this past weekend, we had a party reach out to us from Richland Center, Wisconsin. That would like to donate a nineteen twenty six knot pumper truck to the Allstein Fire Department. Um, the truck was originally owned by the Allstein Fire Department. I'll be putting a group together to go look at the truck, I've got. No idea at this point what the condition of vehicle is, I've seen a couple of pictures. But the way you can do things online, no, I'm not going by that. So I'll keep you up to speed, I don't know if it's going anywhere or not, so.
All right, thank you, any questions? Um, emergency management.
Uh, um, Friday, the April fourth, I received a letter from. Department of Military Affairs, which Wisconsin Emergency Management falls under. Uh, from Chad Atkinson and, um, Frank Engel. They received notice from the Trump administration that they're ending brick resilient infrastructure. Community programs. And canceling all brick applications from twenty twenty to twenty twenty three, which. Uh, the one we did at near Honeymoon Acres and one I'm working on with, uh, Calumet Plymouth, all into that. They're trying to reach out to the federal government to see what's going on and what to expect, so there's more information to follow, but. Right now, it looks like our. Seventy five percent reimbursement of fifteen thousand dollars is in jeopardy. Federal government.
Right. Thank you. Um, municipal court.
Um, I have January and February virtue, I'd like to apologize, I wasn't around the last three months with some health and family issues, but. Um, so for three months, uh, we had twenty seven adults at pre-trials. Um, we have one case set for trial currently with three citations. Uh, we have several, uh, other citations that are still pending, drunk driving related, and one that is. Been appealed from the circuit court to the appellate courts. Uh, that's three guilty by defaults and then twenty one stipulations. Juveniles for, uh, that timeframe and pre-trials, we had one which was a guilty by default. And that was a juvenile that was transferred to my court from the brilliant courts. Uh, initials for the three months, we had sixty five adults. Um. We had thirty three guilty by default, twenty six stipulated, and six that have currently been set for pre-trials for the future. Um, juvenile initials, we had four, excuse me, ten total, four guilty by default, one reset. Two stipulations, two deferred prosecutions, and one transfer again from the brilliant courts, uh. It's a busy three months in that respect, uh. Anybody have questions, the deferred prosecutions are, I do allow with juveniles where. It's their first time offense and instead of a charge, we take six months and maybe. Community service and stuff like that to take care of the violation versus issuing, you know, a fine, a levy and a fine, so. Uh, we had two defers in this last. Three months. All right.
All right, thank you. Uh, city buildings and grounds.
All right, in March, we rebuilt and painted the tetra hedron at the airport, it's that big triangle thing that tells you wind direction, took that all apart, brought it back to our shop. Uh, rebuilt it and then repainted it. Um, G and H took all of our half year to year and a half old compost back to their shop. They did that about a year ago, they mix it in with their topsoil, it works really well. Uh, we had one ice storm and then a couple of snow events, and then. Ben and Jared, uh, replaced the drywall in the outside restrooms at the chalet, it was vandalism, but it was prior to the, uh, cameras going up, it was over a year ago. We, uh, they punched a hole through both, uh, walls and, uh, they replaced it, looks like it wasn't done, so. And that's all I have for March.
Thank you. Um, rec directors, um, Ted Bondi Fishing, Family Fishing Clinic on May tenth. Yeah, no action necessary in that as part of consent agenda. Right, old business, none, new business, item A, discussion, action ordinance number six eighty one. An ordinance advancing funds from tid four. To implement, implementation modification of storm sewer retention pond located at the property of Honeymoon Acres. Uh, Greenhouse LLC.
Okay, so at our previous council meeting on March nineteenth, we had discussions regarding the, the stormwater detention pond, um, the. Uh, engineering firm that Honeymoon Acres contract with us here gave us their report and what. They thought was a good solution to that, we got, we had a little bit of a discussion about that and, and after. After the meeting, um, I reached out to our financial advisor, Aylers, Casey Griffiths is here today, you know, to answer some of these questions. Um, about this, uh, and the, the first question was, is it a tid eligible expense, and the answer is yes, it is a tid eligible expense, that's. Clearly defined within the project plan for tid four. And then the other question was, can we do it as a. MRO or municipal, uh, revenue obligation to the owners of the property? So that they can work with a contractor and get it done, basically what they would do is take on the responsibility. Of hiring the contractor, managing the project, and the city would then. Reimburse them for the expenses of that project. Um, so, and talking to Casey too, I had, I asked them to run us what the amounts that the tid would be. Okay with, I guess, for lack of better terms, um, in terms of dollars to fund for this MRO, um, to this, for this project, so. I think I'm going to start with Casey and he can kind of cover what I just did, but, uh, if you've got any questions for, give us kind of the numbers and walkthrough. Uh, they have this all in their Google Drive, they have the four options, or that you put, three options that you had put all, plus the memo that you guys gave.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, uh, thanks, Cole, um, yeah, so it's Colin kind of mentioned here that there's a, really, you know, from an eligible eligibility expen, eligibility standpoint, this is an eligible expense. Um, the district, district, uh, tid four was amended, the project plan was amended back, I believe in twenty twenty three. Um, and specifically calls out for storm management system improvement, so really the question is, is, um, you know, it's the, the council's discretion as to whether or not you want to advance money. In the form of a municipal revenue obligation, um, for this particular project, obviously if the city's doing the project on its own, that's obviously still a tid eligible expense, so. Um, but, yeah, we ran, uh, after talking with staff, we ran a couple of different, um. Cash flow projections, so the good news is, is tid four is in a good cash, uh, position right now. Um, cumulative fund balance, um, as of, uh, twenty twenty four audit shows a hundred and, uh, twelve thousand, two hundred and thirty seven, um, in the, in the, in the district's fund balance, so. It's got a healthy fund balance and, um, really what you're looking at in terms of if you wanted to do this municipal revenue obligation is. If you wanted to pay the full amount upfront, uh, let's say this year, your, uh, district, just the way it's cash flowing out or projected to cash flow out for this year. Would have a negative, um, you know, uh, expenditures in excess of revenues, if you decide to split that out a little bit more, um, you know, we ran a couple of different, uh. Types of scenarios that could be doing a sixty thousand, um, you know, sixty thousand one year, sixty thousand another year. Um, you obviously don't have those cumulative issues, or I'm sorry, excuse me, those yearly issues, um, you know, with your, um, with your balances moving forward. Obviously, any way you slice it, the cumulative ultimately comes back to, um, it comes back to the, uh, to the positive, um, at some point in time. Um, we've originally projected this district to close, um, in twenty thirty one, that's, um, a number of years ahead of the required closure, which is twenty thirty nine, so. Not saying that you'd want to close it in twenty thirty one, just that it does cash flow still for that amount, even with this MRO. Uh, with this MRO, whichever way you slice it, whichever way you choose to, ultimately it's a council discretion, um, the MRO, I believe you do have a, um. A, um, developer's agreement that would need to be, um, if you're going to pursue this with MRO, uh, you would need a developer's agreement, um, between the city and the, and the property owner.
Uh, and just so we, we, um, had him run the numbers at a hundred and twenty thousand based off the, some of the information from the last meeting, um, we did, I get some additional. Things from, um, Honeymoon Acres for the cost of the engineering and the cost of the landscapes, excuse me, that, so. I'm not sure exactly where that gets us to that point, but I'm assuming that we could. And twenty thousand either way isn't going to make a big difference on this, it's going to, you're going to get the same. Um, outcomes as you did originally, and I still don't think you push that back to twenty, past twenty thirty one.
Doubtful, yeah, I would say if you're, I mean, if you're talking a hundred thousand added on, then maybe that might push it a little bit, but yeah, if you're talking. Ten, fifteen, twenty grand, one way or another, it's not going to, it won't necessarily affect the cash flow right now as projected.
Okay. So this is really, I mean, these, obviously these. Uh, two agenda items are intertwined here and they go together. Um, and this is the cow, so obviously we don't want to make a recommendation to council for the amount that we want to put in here and how we want to handle that, and then if we want to subsequently agree, approve the. Developers agreement, so that's kind of the process we're going to have to go through tonight, but I think now is the time to discuss those costs and outcomes, and, um. I guess I'd turn to you, Joe and Marcy, and. We, we said a hundred and twenty originally, we talked about a hundred thousand for the excavation and the project part about it. And is that, the new one you just sent me today on top of that, so it'd be more like a hundred and twenty six, eleven or whatever, is that kind of the number for our kind, or was it more than?
Yeah, you, you mentioned to me that you wanted to know exactly what the engineering was on it, maybe what the landscaping would be on it, because we did not include that originally, because we were trying to, you know. Make sure we can get this done.
Correct.
One way or the other, so I just gave those numbers to see where it would, where it would fit into what you guys want to do as a council.
Okay. So I mean, I, we're probably going to have to put a exact number into this, so I don't know if we can figure that out before the council meeting or amount not to exceed. Okay, or we could do something like that, um, for that and then come back and. Through the ordinance, but I think we really want a number in that ordinance. So, do, do you have those handy, I mean, we had the.
I did not bring them along, so.
Okay.
Twenty one six on, uh, uh, engineering. Thirty three on. Land style, landscaper, grass planting.
And what was the original court from?
Ninety two, I believe, ninety two, four eight or something like that, so ninety three roughly. But I think that would be on the high end of the. You know, landscaping part of it, I hope. Problem with any project like this is that you're not sure what you're going to run into. Because we do got three phases running through there, we do have gas lines running through there.
Fifty seven.
You got one fifty seven?
Yeah, twenty one, thirty three, and ninety two, eight, no, that's not. One forty seven, I think.
Is that stuff we kind of got to investigate first, like? Bring Digger's Hotline in or something and locate a bunch of this stuff, not that we open the pig worms when we start this, or?
You're going to commit to a certain amount, so then it would be probably on me, right? So.
Just to understand what you're doing under this formula, you're saying you're going to provide. Them this much money.
It was fair enough.
And if they get the project done for that one money, wonderful. It costs them more, that comes out of their pocket, so.
That's, I'm, that's why I'm wondering if you're.
Yeah.
You're comfortable with that, often you have a.
I'm comfortable with all of it, so anything that can come out of this that's better than me paying for all of it, I'm good with that also.
Because it also, not only does it solve some of the drainage problems, but it also allows him to landscape. Improve the value of the property, the idea is you're improving the value of the property. So that increases the tax increment, we don't want to tell them that this taxes are going to, that's the whole idea. The values, yeah. Yeah, so that's how it pays for itself, and that's really when you take TIF money, that's how you really want to look at it. I mean, the other thing that, that we have is that. This agreement could be modified in the future, like saying, okay, and this is one of the things Joe was worried about. Is what if we have another. Construction project that's going to provide twice as much water. Well, we could modify this agreement, because now we get this increment that just. Is going up back here, that's going to create more water. And we may need to change the retention, detention pond even more, so this is something that. Is a fairly flexible for agreement, but we need an agreement that has a dollar amount that you're comfortable with now, it doesn't mean it chiseled in stone.
I got one seventeen six is what I came up with, the ninety three to three and then, uh. Twenty one, so if we did them all.
Thirty three thousand.
Thirty three thousand for landscaping?
Yeah.
Oh, that's what. And forty seven sixes. But now I just put it as a monthly, I'll get a hundred and fifty thousand. And, and I, again, that's.
Probably, yeah, you're. You'll dip in a little bit more, but I think you'd be. Yeah, so your cumulative, you'd run your cumulative down to about thirty. About forty four thousand is your cumulative fund balance for the year, if you go down, if you go up to a hundred and fifty thousand.
It still shouldn't extend a length of.
No.
Because that is the incorrect.
With, we, correct, well, yeah, we don't know what the value is going to be for this, correct, so obviously these are projections based on, um, what we know for, um, twenty twenty five. Uh, well, I should say for twenty twenty five, we do know, um, what the, we have a very good guess of what the increment is going to be, because we know, um, uh, what the, the city's, uh, tid tax rate is, and we also know what. Value has added, so bear in mind, so when construction happens, it's a three year lag when it comes to improvements that are made for a district, so construction happens this year, you don't actually realize. The, um, you don't realize the valuation until two years later, so. In twenty twenty five, construction happens, you won't know the value until twenty twenty seven because of the way that valuations work, it's as of January first of the assessment year, so. For this year, twenty five, that's values, that has already been set for twenty five, that was set January first of this year. Next year is when values will be set for this current year essentially, so any construction happens this current year, that's when values are set, but. Yeah, we can, we can, we can forecast it out, my guess is that there might be some value that's added to it, so.
Go.
If I paid for it, you're not going to tax.
No, there's, no, there's a, there's what's called a uniformity clause in, in state statute, so, um, there's, uh, there is obviously the valuation that's put on to the property. The, um, assessor does, uh, their best to make a value determination as to what's appropriate based on comparable properties. Um, to anybody's property in, 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 in the city, so, um, the, the, the factors within that property will be, will dictate what is the, what the valuation.
I've never heard of it on a landscaping project like that.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, honestly, I do not know that, I do not know the answer, I'm not an assessor.
Seems like. I will tell you from an assessment point of view, you're not going to get a lot of increased value on landscaping.
Correct, yeah, correct.
But, but, but the whole. Area could go up in value. If it becomes less of a problem and some of the other land around you even becomes more valuable because we have to be solving the problem. But I'm not the assessor, so. I'll be sure and tell them your trees are really valuable.
Not with the power company, except when they came through.
Great.
Any more questions? Motion.
Are we doing both of them at once?
Well, no, I mean, you can, you would have to do this one first and then we. Well, no, I mean, you can, you would have to do this one first and then we, there's some changes to the developers' agreement that we worked through today, actually. Um, that we're proposing that we gotta discuss. So you would do this one first, cause that just gives you money, I see that's not gonna change the value. The, the developers' agreement changes when change the value of this project. So I would vote on this first, move this to council, and then we can have the discussion about the developers.
So um, move ordinance six eighty-one. To council with a dollar amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Second.
Second by Rich, any discussion? Uh, I'm gonna do, well, we do local.
Roll count, okay.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Oakley.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Best.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Abrams.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, now, all right, uh, discussion action, developers agreement between the, hosting the honeymoon acre's greenhouse, help the sea. For modification of stormwater retention pond. After the last meeting, I worked with Steve to draft the developers' agreement um, that we could share with uh, honeymoon acres. Um, they reviewed the developers' agreement, they did have an issue with number seven on the, on the developers' agreement. Um, the concern and paraphrasing wrong, Joel, please jump in. Um, is that if there is any other destruction or any other issues that occur that are not the responsibility of. Um, honeymoon acres, like say we do development even on the town side and they get more water in there and now it's making that. Uh, pond look more in disrepair, and it's not part of the. Uh, proposed maintenance plan in there, that it would be their responsibility to fix that. Uh, so that was, that was the, I think was the biggest concern. And was, the second concern was that, that we could have this agreement, this maintenance plan approved. And then leadership could change at either the city or at honeymoon acres. And then, then would be, they'd be stuck in a situation where um, they would be at the mercy of what they're, what the new leadership is. Um, is that fair?
That's it, yes.
Okay, and then after discussion with uh, Steve, um, I, I shared those concerns with him. Um, I didn't provide Steve's response to you, but basically, and I'm gonna let you say it, cause you can say it better than I.
Yeah, and there, there's really two factors that, that go into protecting um. With the concerns that uh, were expressed. Number one is the repair and maintenance plan, or what they call the, the maintenance plan. Is gonna be set up by honeymoon acres, it's not gonna be set up by anybody else. So it has to be approved by the city, but it's their plan, so nobody else can tell them. They have to change that or modify that uh, under the terms of this developers' agreement. Once you approve it, that's the plan, so if you get a brand-new city council, they can't say, well, now we want you to change the way you do maintenance. They, you can't do that, that's the approved plan, that's gotta come from. I presume it comes from you or from your, whoever you hired to, to put the plan together. The second thing which I did add, cause I promised that I would, is I added a paragraph that said. Modifications to the maintenance plan shall be made in cooperation with the city anytime there's additional development. Or other modifications of the drainage patterns affecting the retention slash detention ponds. On the honeymoon acres property, which have been developed pursuant to the terms of the agreement or subsequent amendments here too. All modifications and amendments shall be in writing executed by the parties here too. What that does is if the city does anything to increase the potential. Drainage pattern flow, increasing volume or velocity or even the pattern. That, that becomes the city's responsibility, and if it affects the drainage system. Or the, the, the detention ponds, any of those costs would have to be picked up, not by honeymoon acres, but by the city. Or from the money that would be generated by the new development, which would be a modification of the TIF, which is what I talked about previously. So I think we've covered both of your concerns as far as you control the plan. And any changes will have to be approved by you as well as the city.
I would have to prove it?
Yeah.
Oh, if you, if the, if there was additional construction or additional, we feel water being put in there, that's unnecessary. We'll have to hire an engineering outfit to do this?
No, 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 you'd have to prove the changes we were suggesting be, be made.
If we're, if we're recommending changes to the maintenance plan that we agree upon, then. We have to, you have to approve that.
All right, but what if something like happens across the street or something and you get more water coming in, it damages?
Same thing, the maintenance plan would be the, what the maintenance plan is, any adjustments to that would be the responsibility of the.
You wouldn't have to prove it?
You wouldn't have to prove that, that's the problem coming in?
Steve said when he was going through it, that it would have to be shown that it's, it's a cause of the development outside of the area.
No, if, if you go back to the first part of it, any changes in the maintenance plan have to be agreed to. By the city and you.
Okay.
Okay. So if you came back and said. I don't like, I don't want to continue doing the maintenance the way I designed it, okay? We'd say, okay, why not, you'd say, because of da, 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 and we'd, the city'd say, okay, that's fine, that'll work. But I'm also saying if the city does anything that creates a change in the pattern.
Who would, who would figure that out?
That's, yeah.
That would be the city's responsibility.
If I requested it?
Well, it, it, it's, yeah, if you came in and said, I think the pattern's been changed.
Yeah.
We'd go to our public works department and say, has the pattern been changed? I mean, that's gonna be pretty doggone obvious, right?
Well, if, if a development goes up, yeah, and then it changes and. Right, I mean, and wouldn't there be some studies done before development even went up?
Yeah, you'd have to have a drainage plan that any developer, you know.
Really don't, I coordinate our ordinances in the city.
Well, commercial development has to have.
Stormwater drainage development plan?
Well, then I'm gonna start telling you, you better have that, because, because you really need drainage, you need drainage plans.
It doesn't, and that's where this whole.
Well, planning committee, the planning commission has the right on a site plan to demand to see a drainage plan.
They do, but they never do.
Well, then they should start. They should start that, and then that would help mitigate some of this speculation too.
Yeah, it, it, all I'm saying is I can't, we can't write a contract that says. If the good Lord brings three more rainstorms next year, you know, we can say if we do something as a city that increases the, or changes the pattern. That's gotta be the city's responsibility.
All the difficulty that I have with this whole situation all along, I'm just cautious. Saying okay to something where I know it could be a battle to prove where the water's coming from again.
Well, that's why I put it in language.
I know you did, but.
You have to agree.
I would, I would beg to differ too with um, Kerry Nate, he always has to have a stormwater control plan before he proves a, a building structure. Every time I've had to do it, I've had to have one. Per, per lot that you do.
And that doesn't matter about.
Might not have to be the whole TIF district, but per lot, we've always had to have one.
Yeah, I just can't.
But are you required?
I can't speak for everybody else, yeah, you have a great assessor, and they have to do a stormwater control plan.
But do you have to have, you don't have to have like a retention pan, pond or?
End up being the lotus.
Yeah, that's the DNR.
Somebody's gotta do, don't, don't you do a water, I mean, I, there's no, nobody's here right now, apart from the planning commission, but. I can't believe you're building without knowing where your drainage is.
Right, you have to have it.
Yeah.
I've always had to have it, that's why when I built two acres or more, you'd have to have a detention pond.
But isn't that the flaw in our? Isn't that the flaw in how we're doing it, because everybody, small increments, so they don't have to do any, and then we end up with all this water?
That's what, that's what our friend said last meeting.
Right. That's, so, so there is a flaw in how we're handling.
The original total layout of the whole property when it started was probably the original problem.
Right.
The way, we can't blame them that we're not having stormwater control. During the state approvals, cause they always have them. So the way we're doing it isn't wrong. For, for us to say that stormwater control plans per lot in all the TIF districts that have been developed, that's false statement. Cause Kerry Nate is in charge of doing that and looking over them.
But because.
Each, each development have to have a stormwater control plan before you develop on the property.
Right.
Per state code.
Do you have engineering done by every one of yours?
Everyone. Stormwater control plan for every single lot I developed on, all state-approved plans.
Well, state-approved, yes, for certain parts of it, but not.
For the whole property.
But because of, because it's, because it's small, you don't, that's like because of the size of the acreage?
Depending if you need a detention pond.
Right. That's what.
You have to have a stormwater.
Honestly, you know, there's, there's a real bias here when you're talking, because what you've done up there is over the acreage that you would. If you'd done it all at once, you would have had to have a retention pond put in there, you know that as well as I.
Um, for which property then?
All the ones along, along uh, Altona Drive there.
Two acres or more.
It's one acre or more.
Well.
Yes, Jason, right?
Hundred percent.
Jito's lots is under an acre.
Right.
Yeah, but each lot.
If you did it all at once is what he's saying, and then.
Right.
It adds up.
So again, there's a flaw in how we're doing it.
You didn't leave twenty-five percent green. And that's a, that's a DNR thing, or it's a, it's an ordinance. If we don't have this in the city, you're just gonna keep creating this problem, because you can just stay under those games and just keep playing games.
That's a separate issue, we do need to do it stormwater.
I don't know.
I would like to think we'll be smarter about that stuff.
Let's work on this. I prefer with. Yeah, and obviously, if somebody builds up there, you're gonna, and you see a change. You know, you can point to the, okay, you, somebody developed two acres up there and now my water change.
You, you.
Yeah, you shouldn't have to.
You in general, collectively, I think.
It's already been proved, you know, it's in the system.
And I think past poor experiences notwithstanding, I think, I mean, we're here now, right? Like, we're here doing it, and it took a lot of years to break through that wall, and it's not perfect, but at least we're doing it something, right? I mean, I wish it would have done, been done sooner, but. Better.
Purpose this ordinance, or the, this developers' agreement is to give you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get this problem corrected as it is right now. And to probably put a stopgap on it from being a bigger problem in the future. That's all I can tell you this does, um. And if that's not comfortable for you. Then I don't know what more we can do.
I guess.
A lot better than what it was when you were gonna pay for it all by yourself. You'll be in trouble.
Is this up to date, like this is good to go, he agrees with everything on this?
Well, we'd have to, as amended, cause he added that amendment this afternoon, yeah, so as he did it, so Joe would obviously have to sign this. We'd have to agree as a, with, with, we'd have to agree with your uh, developers' agreement as amended for that to council for approval. And then if that is approved by the council, Joe obviously still has to sign or not sign to make the developers' agreement executed, so.
Would you agree with the, the original discussion though? Does Joe agree with number seven?
That's what, that's what we, we need.
I don't agree with number seven.
So then we got to figure that out.
Well, do you agree with the amended number?
Yeah, that, yeah, he amended it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not put in there as.
Well, it will.
So you'd agree with that part of it though?
Well, I'm not.
The amended part.
I'm unsure about what they mean by maintenance plant.
Maintenance plan is gonna be something that's gotta be developed right now, it's gonna say.
Right.
Here's how you maintain the.
We're not gonna have cattails, it's.
Yeah, well, I, and then I'm not a biologist, okay, I don't know how to maintain it, but I'm sure your people know how. To maintain a retention, detention pond and a drainage system, that's the bit. You can't just let it. I think you gotta clean it up every once in a while.
Yeah, you gotta get the silt off the bottom.
You're talking about the, like, people ask me about cars, I'm not a gearhead, I, I don't know. But there is a maintenance point, based on, I mean.
Yeah, I'd like to jump in, Joe, um, this maintenance agreement, is this that the city maintains or is Joe gonna? Okay, just making sure, cause I really do not want to get in the mess of that, stepping on your toes, you know what I mean, trying to say.
Well, the problem there gets to be also is that it's my.
Right on, agreed, that's why, I, we're just making sure.
At the end of day, do I want a shithole up front? No, that's why this whole thing started, basically, is because it's just a problem up there, and it's a problem for where the water gets away and everything, so. At the end, yeah, I do want a maintenance, but I don't want to be pinned to something that they can come back, because if you read through it, it says that they'll come back and tax me. If it's not done properly, now who decides what's done properly, and then how, how does that procedure go?
And that's the agreement line, outlines, I think that's the maintenance agreement.
That says honeymoon acres shall put together a maintenance plan.
So you decide what, what does that maintenance look like?
The city trusts you more than you trust the city, let's put it that way.
Well, there's, there's a running thing with that, yeah. Past experience.
So, so I guess, yeah, so I guess we can, we can pass it here, move it to council. Make the decision at council and then. Joe can re, reread it and send it to his attorney or whatever he wants to do with it, and then sign it, not the city.
All right, so I move to uh, send the developers' agreement as amended. No.
No, that was the other one.
None of this one.
Right, I'm, so I moved it. Right, I moved to send the developers' agreement between the city and honeymoon acres. At, with number, point number seven as modified, as amended. That was read out loud by the attorney to council.
In point number three. Are we just assuming a hundred percent?
Fifty thousand.
Based on the other one.
This number three's got a blank, so I'm, I'm just assuming that we're putting.
That's what we did the last.
That was the, by the order, it has, we have to do that, cause we done it by order, if we approve the ordinance at council.
So, putting in there a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
One second.
Second, but Brad, any further discussion? Roll call, mayor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Oakley.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Best.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Abrams.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, discussion action, even on winter parking proposal?
The, the. Constituent who uh, wanted to talk about it, I didn't, I didn't think it was gonna be on this one, so I didn't tell him, but is it on council? I told him now, okay, so to put it on, can you put it on the next committee?
Put it on next agenda, all right. Yeah, stable, discussion action, installation of sidewalk on both sides of Calmit Street, south of Heritage to Kiwanis Park entrance.
Colin, did you want me to?
Yeah.
This one was brought up by somebody in my ward, um. By Kiwanis Park, where the newer subdivision is, is in. The sidewalk ends at, what was the cross street, I have a picture of it. Li, li, not Liberty, uh.
At Heritage?
Yeah.
I think, that's what's on, though.
Oh, is there a picture? Um, at Heritage, it ends, and it never was installed, and I'm sure that's just because it, that wasn't all built at one time, but. He walked, walks through there quite a bit, and you're walking on the street. And then like people bike through there, and it's a developed subdivision, I know our ordinance talks about when sidewalks are supposed to go in. So he was uh, wondering if. There was any plan, or could there be a plan to put a sidewalk in at least into that Kiwanis Park entrance, cause that's where a lot of people end up going in. Cause right now you're either on the road or on lawns. And it just, it's unsafe, and, and he, he, he walks there a lot, and he, there's lots of cars and. Um, it's just not, and he just wondered why that subdivision, I guess, have sidewalks or have to have sidewalks.
Well, for the, for the, for the sidewalk ordinance, any subdivision, once it's fifty percent complete, is supposed to have sidewalks in the subdivision. Um, that one was not done there, the other part of the ordinance is that if council teams, if a safety issue, they can require sidewalks and put in, 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 in an area. So those are two uh, points of the ordinance that are applicable here, and it's just a matter of what the council would like to decide to do with this, this request.
Was there any property owners involved?
Uh, well, the, the cost of the sidewalk would be assessed back to the, to the property owners. And I don't, I don't know how many properties are on there, I, I'm sorry, I didn't look into it, now we could pull up a map and I could get an idea.
I think that if the ordinance says it's supposed to happen, it should happen, and I'm, and I don't say that lightly, cause I have to pay for my sidewalk maintenance, and I know that it, it can be a cost. But we all have to do it, we know that's part of, of homeownership, and it's a developed subdivision now, so there are people and. Uh, that use it and postal workers and, you know, all of the things. So for one subdivision to like not have to follow the ordinance for sidewalks, I don't think any of us would opt to have them if we had a choice. That's why there's an ordinance for it, and I agree, I, I walk there, I live in that neighborhood and my kids and, and I walk down there too. And I think at least to the Kiwanis Park entrance, there should be, but I don't think that we should exempt the neighborhood. For any particular reason, I think that if that's more than fifty percent developed, which I think it is, that they should have sidewalks.
I think it's our best interest to see the cost of it first.
Yeah, see how much, how many are, you know.
And obviously, if we're gonna put sidewalks in there, there's gotta be, it's going back to the homeowner, which.
It should be notified.
Some sort of a structure.
Well, it would have to, since it would have to go through a public hearing.
Right.
All that process in order to, I, I don't know all the, but a number of them to get through that process that would probably be put on the, on the sidewalks and that subdivision.
So, do we still, do we still have that, if they can afford to pay it, they can, we pay it and they can pay it over five or ten years?
Well, like tax, like on their t- taxes?
We have done that, it, it would, it would be however we design it this time, it's been, I've seen it done a couple of different ways over the past, from what I, records I've seen. So it, it would be, it was different on the X project than it was on a previous. So it it would be, it was different on the X project than it was on a previous project. So it's whatever the council wants to decide. You just make it as least complicated as possible. You don't need to choose the best of the password. It just gets overly complicated and you can't. It's very difficult to figure out when you start doing the payment plans.
Screen law and family when they're standing up there screaming.
Yeah.
It looks like it's about thirteen ish. Houses. And I'm looking on Google Maps and I don't know if they're all they all show up.
Is that in the part from Calumet?
So that's it's all it's Calumet Drive turns into Parkview Drive. And it's at Heritage up to Heritage has sidewalks, so it's after Heritage. So then it's two. On Calumet, I I think, and then it turns to Parkview. And then it's two. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. But I think this doesn't have them all. So I'd guess it's like twelve or so now that there's been more built. Twelve or. Ish.
I I think what we need to do is get more information of exactly. You know, where the sidewalk could be, how much the cost would be.
Yeah, so how can we do that?
Well, we'll have to assign that to Jason to figure out.
And then where are you gonna draw the line? Because Stonewall, Lisa Lane, all them don't have sidewalks over there.
Well, for the safety. I think.
Okay, looking at that, that part to the trail, I think, is owned by the city, correct? Because that's part of the creek.
Portion of it, Richard, correct. Then I think it's. Lots, Richard, you're right on. A house.
So that. To get to get to that walking trail, the city, it'd be fall of kind on the city. To execute that 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 would alleviate that problem for that. Um, I guess the rest of it, too, to finish the the sidewalks, but. Being that would be our responsibility. I don't think there would be much of a problem just completing it, correct?
It has to be special assessed, just like um, anything else was.
There are some.
Tony trunk X.
There's gonna be some houses affected.
Correct, hundred percent. Two houses, if you went into the first trail.
I know that you're talking, he's talking about the like the that's on a bridge.
First part to the trail still affects two houses.
Correct, right on. Then a little portion of ours where the creek would be, the easement on both sides.
That would be our responsibility.
Right, no different than X where we we took care of the. Right, we took care of the creek.
I think at minimum, that's the safety concern. So that could be, that's like the first priority to figure out the cost of that.
And on both sides, are we talking just to get to the trail? Because then it would affect.
Uh, the ordinance might address that. I know it does in previous communities I've been in where it addresses if you do one side, you do the other. But I don't know as far as that was, I'd have to go back and look at it to verify that.
Yeah, and the ordinance is kind of vague. It says you don't need sidewalk, like you said, when it's developed. But then if it goes to a dead end, there is an ordinance in there that says you do not need it. So in theory, you could say Parkview is a dead end. And then it would not need any of it.
Stonewall, too?
Stonewall, Lisa, Lisa not has none, you know, good chunk of Lisa. So it's like, where do you?
Yes, the main thing I think is to get to the park. So I mean, if that's that's the priority, that I think is why it was mostly brought up.
We can look into that. Just wanna get cost for that part of it.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
It it looks like it only affects just the um, the one property there fifteen twenty-two. And then it goes right to our um. To our easement, the city in New Holstein, and that would get you to the. To the trail, but I get the big picture, but this would fix the short term issue. Just saying.
All right, we can bring that back.
Thank you.
Let us let us know, Jason, when. You have the answer, if it's next month or following, whatever.
Sounds good. Get a measure.
Okay, that back up.
Yeah.
All right. Um, discussion, action, creating ordinance, restricting sale and possession of hemp derived cannibalism. Instant. Synthetic cannibals. I'm gonna turn the floor over to. Who had asked that this be put on the agenda to discuss. Um.
Okay. Senator. I brought along. Annie Van Neupert. We're representing as volunteers of the Calumet County Reach Coalition. We're all about. Saving our children. We are asking that the city create an ordinance. Uh. Regulating the sale of the. Hemp derivative. Uh.
Cannabinoids?
Yeah. Not cannibal, cannabinoid. It's a psychoactive. Substance. Uh, it's available. To all ages right now. Kids of all ages can purchase this. It's just a tad less than. THC. Heroin. So I'm asking that we, there there'll be more information sent to you about this. Uh. Annie, would you like to explain just a little bit more about?
Sure. Um, so there's a booklet um, and kind of an ordinance guide that was provided, I think Ken provided it and can be emailed out, a booklet specific to New Holstein. But across Calumet County in the state of Wisconsin, hemp derived products are not regulated. So hemp drive product product could be something like CBD, which is considered benign. Or it can be products like Delta Eight, if you've seen any advertisements, other communities sell those products. Um, hemp derived products are. Legal under the Farm Act, so they're regulated federally, not by the state. A hemp drive product is similar to THC in the effects that it can have. So in a very shortened. Discussion, a hemp drive product can be considered. Similar to marijuana in the intoxicating effect. Because it's not a regulated product in the state of Wisconsin, um, communities are assessing or creating ordinances to stop the sale to minors. So at this point in time. Anyone in the state of Wisconsin in Calumet County or in the city of New Holstein can sell a Delta Eight product, which is intoxicating, to a child. There is nothing stopping that sale. Uh, so that's the concern. I won't speak for the police department, nor will I speak for the school, but I can tell you across Calumet County, these products are in our schools with frequency. So we have children who essentially are high on a THC product. Um, with access to that through various means and they are purchasing them locally and in Calumet County. I haven't done a survey recently in New Holstein itself. But I can tell you most likely the gas station, one or two are selling them. Um, they are being sold in other communities in Calumet County right now. Again, they're not age regulated, so that the concern is that a thirteen year old, a ten year old, an eighteen year old can walk in and buy those products. This ordinance would restrict the sales, requiring the retailer to age ID appropriately, similar to tobacco products and alcohol. Not restricting adults from using the con the. The products, the edibles, the vapes, whatever. It's solely restricting that children cannot have it. Additionally, it would be recommended that there would be a retail license or application to sell the products, again, similar to tobacco, which is regulated. And alcohol. That would give law enforcement the opportunity to make sure that those retailers aren't selling it. Right now, there's no list across the state or even locally of who sells what, where. It's community coalitions were kind of keeping track of it. So in Calumet County, restaurants sell the products, grocery stores sell the products. Um, the gas stations sell the products. You can sell them from your home. You can grow them and sell them, process them. There's zero restriction on any of these at this point.
Do they show up on a drug test?
For gas and. It depends. They're constantly being made. So the the other issue is these are derived from a natural product. Um, it's a huge, and the booklet can kind of go through this, but there's a huge chemical process that goes into it. And so. Um, since I've been researching these in the last five years, it's gone from Delta Eights, Delta Nine, Delta Ten, Delta Eleven, Delta Twelve, HHC, THC. So it's chemically being recreated. Every time we kind of get our arms around, here's another one. There's there's two or three in the making.
I'd just like to say. That Annie is the expert on this subject. She's been through all parts of the state. Lecturing on this, so she knows what she's talking about. Take her word for it. And I think it's something that. Like the Sierra City app for sure.
Ideally, Reach would like to see all of our communities create an ordinance to make it one large. Um, create a bigger quilt pattern across the state. Kacana has done it. Um, a lot of area in Wisconsin Rapids is working on it. So what this will do is extend that restricted area that are useful and have access. Um, and hopefully eventually push this to be a state issue, uh, because it's a new product, so it hasn't been regulated. Um, but but I am involved with a large network of other coalitions that are substances use prevention coalitions trying to help kind of keep this out of the.
I did send out, uh. You did get a copy of the Kacana and Harrison. Ordinance they recently passed. Would you would you all like a a booklet with a little more information? Colin has a copy. He can send it out. Colin, are are you? You you wanna do that or is?
Their ordinance is I. And you sent me the copy?
The I just of the ordinance. I'm just talking about, we have another flyer, what I gave to you earlier. You wanna send that out?
Yeah, I can I can add it to their um.
And do what I can.
Yep.
I guess I'd only, last thing I'd ask is if Chief Fisher had any thoughts on it.
Um, I'm gonna be honest, I'm not real versed in this. Officer Shalmo has a lot more. Feelings with this sort of thing. Um. They keep changing these things in order to make it as legal as they can. And a lot of times, these are made before it even gets to legislation. Uh, it could take years before legislation pass passes something. Um. I think that. They created an ordinance for any children under eighteen. I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I don't know enough about it. But. I don't know what other municipalities in the county are doing overall, the sheriff's department or or other cities.
Two down. We got Kacana and Harrison so far. Chilton's next.
It's it's kind of like a no harm, no foul kind of situation, in my opinion, because it's, I mean, how do you hold this up in court of law? Well, this is just an ordinance that we can pass as a city, but like as a police officer, I mean, it's really not a law.
I mean, we're we're still enforcing city ordinances.
You have to enforce an ordinance, but there's really no.
Yeah, we couldn't charge them criminally.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Yeah.
No, it would just be a monetary penalty.
Right.
And the and if Kenny, we require that if you're doing business in New Holstein as like a gas station or whatever that you have.
It would be a licensing issue, I guess. I mean, I'm not sure from that standpoint if they violate their license and they're caught doing that. I don't know what the penalties would be from the city standpoint, from a business standpoint.
It would be, it could be similar to an alcohol license, which is a municipality agreement. So. Um, your alcohol license needs to apply through your municipality each year. This could be the same, would be the same concept. It could be structured around a very similar. Dialogue.
Where's tobacco done?
Tobacco is is state. State federal.
We issue the license.
For alcohol.
Yeah, and we would issue the license for. The sale of this as well.
Yes, I would refer back to Mr. Sorensen to see what his. What his experience has been with other municipalities he's working with with this sort of thing, if it's come up. I'm just I'm just being honest. I'm not well versed in this specific.
Yeah, it's illegal to be I be possessed by anyone under the age of twenty-one. So let's start with it. I'm sorry, ma'am.
Not in the state of Wisconsin.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry, but that's.
THC is not hemp derived.
Delta Eight and Delta Nine. I'm sorry, that's the law, okay? You can say whatever you want. That's the law in Wisconsin.
It it is.
I'm sorry, that's the law in Wisconsin. You wanna read it? I have it right in front of me.
What are you? I'm sorry, what are you looking at?
I'm looking at the Wisconsin statutes. So possession is illegal in Wisconsin if you're under twenty-one.
Not of a hemp derived. Delta Nine is absolutely.
So but but again. You, that's not the question you asked me. This is the debate you get into, okay? The debate is there's all kinds of synthetic products that are illegal for possession. There's some active. Because it's a naturally produced substance and many food products. Exist. That's where the problem gets to be. If it's a natural, it's in hemp, it's in certain um. Green products, you can pro provide a law or ordinance that says that certain products cannot be sold in stores. Um, or cannot be sold to anyone under a certain age. You can do that. There's nothing wrong with doing that. Um. So and I know there's two or three municipalities that I work for that have. What in this law and the problem is you have one group that fights for. The rights of citizens to. And eat whatever they want to eat and do whatever they want. And the other side of the coin is those that. That say that, no, you gotta minors don't know what they're doing, so you gotta make sure they don't get it. Um, so you have that, but the answer is. Wisconsin mandates you have to be at least twenty-one years of age before you can purchase or consume Delta Eight. And or Delta Nine. Um, and that's the law in Wisconsin. Um, that does not control certain other products that are not considered synthetic products, but are considered natural products.
It's about enforceability, I think, is the main concern. That's kind of why I wanted Chief Fisher to to give his opinion because it's like. Enforceability, like if you look at the Kacana. The Kacana ordinance is kind of bananas because it has, it lists like a whole bunch of.
That's.
Acronyms and stuff or and I how how is anybody I I.
The only reason they do that is because what they're doing back there is they're taking what the state laws trying to define as an illegal product. And they're trying to give as much definition as they can. And really what they're trying to do is re is reduce the sale of it. They're not trying to. Possession. As we know, we've got a lot of students that are out there drinking that are under the age of twenty-one, you know, which is illegal. I mean, possession of alcohol by a minor other than the company their parents are in a restaurant is illegal. I bet you I can go to most every home in this town. There's alcohol in the home. There's an eighteen year old or seventeen year old or fifteen year old. And this is the problem is with. THC, especially the new products that are coming out of Michigan and Illinois and in Minnesota, they're coming into Wisconsin and they're in the homes. So fifteen year old, fourteen year old can. Pick it up and use it after their parents let them. It's so you can create a law, which Wisconsin did, that says it's illegal to possess it. We've also created a law that says illegal purchase or consume it. But you're right, enforcement.
Well, you'd have to. Be able to. You'd have to be able to prove that it's either not the synthetic or this, and that's like you're then you need like a chemistry degree just about.
The department, you have to have some type of of testing system and it takes a long time to send it into state labs to come back.
If it would, if it be meant to be a deterrent, just simply a deterrent for kids to be just go walking into QuickTrip or the BP and just buying these gummies or whatever.
I can easily come back to you with an ordinance that that other cities have implemented. And there's nothing, as you said, with no harm, no foul.
Yeah, if it's a deterrent.
The deterrent, but I just want you all to know that. This is an area that is so complicated.
It seems like no matter what you list on the ordinance, to your point, they're gonna come up with something different before you even have it printed and, you know, or put on the internet as an ordinance.
Most people that are using illegal drugs are not. I'm in the grocery store.
Well, I think that's their point. I think that's the reach people's point is that if there's like. Because I think I've seen the pamphlet and it's got pictures of what's like a. Normal gummy ring and then what's one with the Delta whatever, you know, and it it does cause them to be feel high. It does cause them to, and if they're like little and it looks like a peach ring or whatever gummy. And it it isn't, there's parents that wouldn't want their kid to be buying that. I mean, so if there's some parameters around it as a deterrent, that's fine with me. I just think.
If you want me, I'll bring an ordinance back to you at the next meeting or get you one.
You have another comment?
I was just gonna say, when we're really asking is that we're regulating the retailer. So you're making it clear to retailers, it's unacceptable to sell these products to children. So they're not allowing them into that store. They're not allowing them to the section. There are stores. In in Calumet County where it's locked off, right? So they have to do an ID check. This all started, there was a vending machine in Kacana in a grocery store. Um, not regulated and anyone could walk up and they and the Kacana Police Department found that the students, youth were leaving school and walking up to this vending machine and buying these products and going back to school. And then they were essentially intoxicated, right? So all the effects of based on which product they, there's a lot of products. So so having it an ID required for a person to check is really the goal of it. Yes, we know that kids may have access at other points. Obviously, their parents can give it to them. That's that's an option, too. This is just the community saying. It's not acceptable for your store to sell to my child.
And to make it easy. I mean, and it shouldn't be, they shouldn't be next to each other, especially because then you can get it by accident in theory.
And they do. They look like candy. They look like regular vapes. And I'm not saying one thing or another about tobacco vapes, but they look exactly the same if they're going around schools. Um, if an ordinance was written, it wasn't, it's not going back to the child to be punitive to the child. It's the store who has to be responsible for selling the.
Put them behind the counter with the other things that are regulated, basically. I'm fine with that.
Yeah. So would you like Steve to? Read something for us?
Yeah.
Right. Is that good?
I think we're good. Good enough for me.
Right. All right, discussion, action. All right, discussion, action, and our submitting chapter four of the municipal code.
What we're doing is taking chapter four, basically, proceed cleaning it up. Is it under Dropbox, it's called?
Um, no, I think it was for you, we were going to discuss, and then after that, we would make the changes.
Changes, and then, okay.
Bring it as first reading.
Okay, that's, all right. So the current one calls out that the fire department should have, shall have at least twenty-two active members. So I'm proposing is to strike that out of that, to a new chapter. One of the other ones would be to update, um, it says hold a valid certificate, certification showing firefighter one status. What I'd like to do is go through and then reference job description for interior firefighter. So if we make changes to the membership requirements, everything would be based off of job descriptions, instead of coming back to the council for changes in municipal code, in the chapter four. There's another section in here, we're called out, it got somewhat confusing with the amount of time for, second term, probationary period. Right now, the probationary period is based off of a member receiving the firefighter one certification. I have members that have been on the department for over three years that haven't achieved their firefighter one certification. And it just gets so long. So what I'd like to do is go to one year and meet the requirements listed in the interior firefighter job description. That way, we can make a decision between myself, police and fire commission, whether or not those members are a good fit or not, to keep moving on. And that's a lot of the changes that are in here, are, I'm proposing to that. The current one has with the retirement program, that we were doing a hundred and twenty-five dollars per year service for any member over fifteen years of service. We've entered into the length of service award program, so that would be another update that I would propose that we have in here. One other spot, it's got on here for a fire record book. Back in the day, everything was done on paper. We don't, nothing's on paper anymore. What the requirements we have now is I have sixty days from the time of a fire call. The, put in a NIFRS report, it's National Fire Incident Reporting System. I have to put reports into there, so we'd get away from a book and just get over on the electronic side of things. And through and through with the changes I made in here, that's what the proposals would be. Tom is gone in the state level. Now we go by SPS. And that was another update for our fire inspection program. So everything that I had in here, um, I could have Colin give you the side by sides that you could view them.
Yeah, if you have it typed up where anything changed is highlighted and then.
Yep, and I'll give them everything I have, and then, and that's what the proposals would be. Just update the quote.
Sounds good.
Yeah, just get it cleaner.
Okay. Sounds good. Uh, discussion, action, replacement of police cameras at City Hall.
Uh, I'll start and then you can jump in. There are a couple of cameras, at least one camera that is no longer working here in the department. Um, they are on the light, they're analog cameras, they need to be upgraded to digital. Um, the hope is that if you can replace these cameras, um, with cameras that are compatible and would work on our new, our new system that we have, as Chief mentioned, the ones that we used to get a couple of those, uh, people caught from, for the vandalism. Um, so we're asking that the council approve the quote from P E C C, which is our current camera provider and vendor, and, and, um, you can go ahead and purchase those from them.
Out of the capital budget?
Correct.
I move this and that to council.
Oh, second. Move back, deck, by Becca, second by Dan, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. A discussion update from Homour appraisal on citywide assessment.
So normally, we do our open book in beginning of May, and then followed by the border review in, um, later on in May. Um, we have reporting requirements that we have to do, and nursing requirements that we have to do through the, uh, state or required by the state. But because we're doing the full assessment, you don't, you don't do the open book until the equalized value reports are out by the state. So the hope is that those equalized value reports match what our assessor is, and you try to coordinate that so that we're at that one point zero zero on our assessment ratio, so that we're, our assessed value is the same as our fair market value. So, but as this process goes, we still have to hold a board of review meeting. Um, that will be done on May twenty-first, I believe, and we have to have that notice thirty days prior to that border review. But generally, what we'll do at that border review is we will call the meeting order and then, um, adjourn to our September date when we are going to do our uh, open book. Uh, the September date we have right now is September twenty-first, that is, uh, can switch based off of how the rest of the process goes, but that's, that's the process, so it's just a little bit different. They're in that process, they're still in the process of doing that, but we're sending notices out, notices of assessment out to people coming up in the, in, in the near future here. So that's the update from Homour.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Um, item I, discussion, concessions, stand naming rights. Brad and Adam will address this one.
I guess one of the conversations was, um, obviously, a lot of you guys saw the, um, the donation amounts for the concession stand building that we're, used money for. Um, one of them was, uh, naming rights of the building, which was a thirty thousand dollar plus, um, donation. Uh, the question that we had, um, without, pretty much with, with leaving names out of it was, you know, if, if there was a, you know, a local establishment in this area that, um, was basically served adult beverages, was a restaurant, or was a bar, and if there'd be an issue, um, if one of those companies came forward or didn't want to donate and have naming rights to that sign. So basically, what we wanted to do was bring it in front of the council, um, and if they don't have issues with it, then we would let basically Adam and Dan run with the, the naming rights and approving those people, that if they did come forward for donation of that dollar amount, we'll let them do it.
Because it's alcohol? That's the concern, you mean?
If it was alcohol related.
Or like a place that's.
Or a place that served it. Well, basically.
I don't think there's a problem.
Basically, a discussion.
You serve alcohol.
Yeah.
Park, you have an alcohol license, so.
Right.
I, I don't see an issue.
I mean, it's not going to be a strip club, or?
No. No, if it did, it had, it would have basically ties and roots to the, to the community.
One of the things the law has said you do is they develop a naming policy publicly. I mean, if you develop a policy that, you know, then you don't get into this issue, then if the policy says, this is our policy, we don't, we name nothing, you know, unless the person's dead, I'm just making that up. Um, or we don't, uh, we don't sell naming rights, um, unless there's a maintenance amount. I mean, there's all kinds of different programs that are out there. Uh, and that's what, I mean, when Colin asked me about this, I thought you should all do is maybe put together a policy so that if people do want to donate money and want a naming right. And again, donations that are also advertising, not really donations, it's advertising. So you may want to talk about how you want to do that. Because otherwise, you can get into a problem where some people feel that you did this for Gene, but you wouldn't do that for Steve, you know, and then you get those, but if you have a nice policy, then you don't have to worry about that. That's the only thing I recommend that you think about.
Is a part of that policy a length of times?
Well, that's why a lot of them have policies that say if you don't provide a maintenance fund for it, that it's whenever the city deems that it's.
Worn out.
Worn out, it's gone. So you can call it Quanis Park until Quanis doesn't give any money to keep the park up anymore, and then you can take Quanis off of it and call it Rotary Park, Rotary's giving the money for it.
If I'm not mistaken, Adam or Brad, that will be in the sponsorship materials that you're putting off, in a length of time, that the.
Timelines for this one, because, but we ran it that, you know, the batting cage was donated initially, we had to buy the new netting. They still get the rights for it, you know, like, well, we paid for it this time, you still get credit, that kind of thing. So this one, we, on our bullshit materials, we do have timelines of how long these sponsorship options are available.
What's the, what's the naming right one? Is that ten year?
I think they're fifteen, other than the bricks. The bricks will be permanent, uh, paper engraved paper bricks, but other than that, I believe they're fifteen years. I can, I can actually, yeah.
There, yeah, there was timelines on basically every, you know, marketing area of the building. They don't, women after the fifteen or ten year mark, and was up for rebid, I guess, if you want to call it. You don't, reformation.
Seventy more years.
What's that?
Our current building's from the seventies.
Right, yeah.
They can get to sell this three different times.
So I guess to move forward with it is of a, what type of policy do we all have to write up, or?
I mean, I think if you already built in that there's an expiration date, it kind of takes care of the maintenance part of it. And if someone's willing to donate that much, I mean, I understand what you're saying about advertising, but that is part of it. That's why you would give that kind of money is partly for that, so. And I don't have a problem with the drinking part of it, because alcohol is.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of a, what name would we not, like, do we have any crudely named business? You know what I mean? That, that's really what.
Well, isn't it always sort of up to the discretion too of, like, of the committee that, like, in this case, it's Adam.
Um, yeah.
And I mean, we, hopefully that there's people on there that would have discretion too, that they can always still decide if you're going to accept the donation or accept the, that's why we have them.
It wouldn't be named after the organization, they would be able to name it anything they wanted ostensibly.
So that's part of where, maybe not this issue comes up, but there's, we advertised building naming rights. So that's not a neon sign on top of it that's flashing, but it's sort of up to what that group or individual has in mind is, was our intent, like, okay, you're going to get this, what are you hoping to get from it? And then some of the smaller ticket items, there, there, it's a simple plaque above the serving window, right? Very basic stuff.
Sure.
Um, but for the amount of money that group, groups is willing to provide, kind of want to work with them. What, what are you looking for here?
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Like, if you want, they could pay, I'm just.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a concrete, I mean, for that one, for the rest of them, it is, but for that specifically, it's.
I mean, is this not how baseball stadiums operate, right? I mean.
It is, yeah. And I think everybody knows that, obviously, Adam's the president of the Baseball and Softball Association, Dan's Colonel's the president of the Soccer Association, so if their committees and their crews are obviously respected, where they can come up with a, basically, an adult reasoning to make sure the name is appropriate.
And you can use us for a crutch. I mean, if, if there's something you're like, I don't know about, I mean, they say, well, I, I mean, you can use us to say, well, I gotta go to city council, you know. You can use us, you can use us.
Well, I'll say this, I was part of developing a sponsorship and naming right policy. It took us a year to get that, then that knocked down and done right, based off all the comments we thought that, going through the park committee over to the, the town board and all that stuff. Um, I don't think we have time to do that for this. I think we do need to have a policy in place and we can start working on that, and I can be directed to start working on that. But I think in the, in the interim here, I think it would behoove the council to, um, give the discretionary right, discretionary, um, authority for naming rights to baseball and soccer, assuming they will do it in the best interest of our community and of our kids.
What he said is fine with me.
Mark?
Well, and we also have, we're developing Optimus Park with the playground, and we've talked about the same thing there. I mean, we're trying to raise a hundred thousand dollars, we have about twenty right now, if Sargento wants to kick in eighty, and we put up Sargento Park at Optimus, or playground at Optimus Park. Darn right, I'd like to do that.
Are you putting this out to them right now?
We, we. It's not the agenda.
We've already, I just want you guys to think of that, that, that's another.
Yeah.
So I think Colin's ideas, you guys can move forward, but we do need to.
Yep.
A guideline.
Yep, and there's, there's, I think, I, like I said, I've worked on this in the past, I have examples of naming right sponsorships and stuff, but it is going to take a while to get that all locked down.
We got a little time yet.
All right, so I think we're all in agreement?
I think so.
All right.
Yeah, it's all good.
All right, um.
Eric got the last word, he got the last word.
He got the last word.
I had to get one last word in, yeah.
Eric, you can stick around, because we do have a resolution recognizing your service at the very end of the council, if you're.
On the agenda. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, this meeting have earned.
All right, give it a couple minutes, give it a minute here.
Welcome aboard.
What about South fires?
Got your name modified, at least. Nice, that's right. Shall I give it to him?
I'll give you eight thousand dollars.
I'll cash it out, I'll cash out both of them, and then I'll have the turnaround.
And.
I'll get you ready whenever you are.
Okay, I'd like to call the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five common council meeting, the order. Let's stand for the pledge. By flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, looks like the administrator, uh, oath of office of newly elected officials.
All right, so all our newly elected, Becca, Kathy, Gene, and Norm, please stand. I will, I will raise your right hand after I read this, please answer in the affirmative that I do. Um, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office to which you are elected to the best of your abilities, so help you God?
I do.
All right, you are officially elected. At the end of the meeting, all the new people, please stick around. I have your certificates of election, and then I also have the oath of office that you will need to sign for me, so that we can get that registered.
All right, looks like action, election of the president of the common council, looking for motions.
I'm gonna make a motion to reelect, uh, Gene.
You can, Miss Fine, Dan can have it.
Moved and seconded by Dan. Um, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. I guess we can, uh, do we want to, do we still have to vote on it since it's pretty un, only one? Nope. Looks like Gene, you're our, um, president.
You accept.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay.
I wear that title with honor.
Roll call's been taken. Okay, approval of the agenda?
I'm moved.
Moved. Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Um, approval. Approval of the previous common council meeting minutes, January ninth, or no, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
All moved, seconded.
Moved, seconded, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Um, any citizens input?
No.
None, none, okay. Approval of the consent agenda?
I moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Uh, new business actually will be taken on these items unless indicated that they are discussion or first presentation items. Uh, first presentation ordinance six eighty-one and ordinance advancing funds from TID four to implement modifications on the, of the stormwater retention pond located on the property of honeymoon acres, greenhouses LLC.
So move at the first. Oh, we don't have to. Okay. Gotcha.
This first presentation. All right. Um, action roll call vote, resolution number fifteen seventy-four, a resolution designating the official bank for depository funds, BMO Harris, N A.
We need a roll call.
No.
Okay.
I move to, uh, approve resolution fifteen seventy-four.
Second norm, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Eyes have it.
Rich, we can do all these at once, but so we can, uh, do resolution fifteen seventy-five through fifteen seventy-nine as one item.
All right. Well, then I'll, I'll move, I'll, uh, I'll bundle the rest of them together. Was it action?
He can't, he, I'll, I'll move to, um.
Don't I gotta rattle? I gotta read them first and then, then there will be a, a moment, um, I'll move and then it'll get seconded. And then we vote on the rest of it.
Yeah.
Correct? So um, action. What's that?
No, you don't really have to read them out loud. You, because everybody's got a copy of it, but the person making the motion should probably say, I would like to move resolution fifteen seventy-five regarding the resolution designating official bank, Collins State Bank in fifteen seventy-six resolution designated official, through the whole thing.
I'll do that. Um, I will move to approve resolution fifteen seventy-five, designating the official bank for depository funds, Collins State Bank. State Bank, uh, resolution fifteen seventy-six, designating official bank for depository funds, bank first. Fifteen seventy-seven, designating official credit union for depository funds. Does it have to say which credit union? No. Uh, resolution fifteen seventy-eight, designating the official paper for publication and fifteen seventy-nine, designating a local government pooled investment fund.
I'll second them all.
Discussion. I'd like to verify something on this, uh, Mr. Sorensen, uh, doesn't the person conducting the meeting have to read it prior to the motion or not being it's an agenda item or not?
No, they don't have to as long as it's printed and it was part of your package. As long as they've seen it, you don't have to read it.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Action roll call vote, approval, approved developers agreement between city and Holstein and honeymoon acres, greenhouses LLC for modification of stormwater retention pond.
I move from the approval of the developers agreement.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Although, uh, roll call.
The amendments are included.
Um, Schrader.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Oakley. Aye. S.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Abrams.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Action roll call approval proposed for the T E C C security systems in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-four cents for the replacement of the police cameras at city hall.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Um, I guess we'll go do a roll call.
Watson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Abrams.
Aye.
Oakley.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
S.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Action roll call, resolution fifteen eighty, a resolution recognizing Eric Meyer.
I'll move for resolution fifteen eighty.
A second.
Jean, Steve. Discussion. Follow, um, roll call.
I want you to saw all those in favor.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Action, resolution fifteen eighty-one, a resolution recognizing Robert Schmetzler.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Miscellaneous business proclamation, twenty twenty-five Arbor Day, uh, proclamation, twenty twenty-five poppy month. No other, what's that?
I'm going to say both of those proclamations are in the Google Drive. And for your viewing.
All right. Um, and, uh, no other business, meeting adjourned.